Good evening, everybody. It's 5:45. Before we begin, just so everybody knows, technically tonight is two separate meetings. So, once we finish this organizational meeting, the next one will start at 6 o'clock. And so, if we close this up and you didn't get a chance to talk, don't think you've been ignored. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public with the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Dr. Smith?
Here.
The meeting's called to order.
The first order of business will be organization of the Board for 2025. First item is election of officers, first election of president. Do we have a nomination for president?
I... Go ahead. Oh, Mrs. A... 5:10, I nominate...
Any other nominations? Valerie, do you call the roll?
We have a second.
Oh, do we need a second?
Second.
We have a second. Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Stane.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral 3A2, election of vice president. I nominate Stephanie Smith. Do we have any other nominations? Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Stane.
Roman numeral 4, or 3B rather, setting the time, date, and place for regular meetings. I make a motion that we set our meetings for the second Monday of the month at 6 o'clock. And where would we pick it place?
The first floor high school extended learning area.
All right. First floor high school extended learning area unless publicized otherwise. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral 4, setting a bond with treasurer in the amount of $50,000. I make a motion that we do that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Valerie, could you just give a brief explanation so the folks here know what that is and why we're doing it?
It's something that we do every month, and it is basically establishing a bond to protect the district from anything that may happen.
We have a motion, a second. Valerie, do you call the roll?
I'm sorry, the second?
Tyson.
Tyson, second.
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral 5.1, resolutions adopting treasurer standing authorization for calendar year 2025. 5.1, request the advanced draw on taxes. Treasurers hereby authorized by the Board of Education to request advanced payment of taxes collected as funds, available in accordance with Section 321.34 of the Ohio Revised Code. I make a motion that we approve that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral 5.2, appropriation modifications. Treasurer hereby authorized to make appropriation modifications between fund accounts with these modifications being reported to the Board. I make a motion to that effect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Valerie, could you give a quick discussion, explanation, so folks know what that is?
Yes. We have appropriations of how we can spin through our different funds, or as I call it, our different envelopes. And this allows me to increase appropriations or decrease appropriations depending upon what is needed in the various funds, and then report to the Board at 4:00.
Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral 5.3, rather, treasurer authorized to pay all bills within the limit of the appropriation resolution as bills are received and when merchandise has been certified as received in good condition by the superintendent or her designated. I make a motion to that effect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
And Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral 6, resolution adopting superintendent standing authorizations for calendar year 2025. 6.1, resolution naming superintendent as purchasing agent for 2025. I make a motion to that effect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral 6.2, resolution authorizing the superintendent to accept resignations. I make a motion to that effect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
And Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral 6.3, resolution authorizing the superintendent to hire staff between board meetings. I make a motion to that effect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
And Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral 6.4, superintendent as designate for student disciplinary suspensions in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 3316.66D and Policy 5611. The Board hereby appoints the superintendent as a designate for purposes of hearing and deciding appeals of student disciplinary suspension. It further resolved that the decision of the superintendent may be appealed under Chapter 2506 of the Ohio Revised Code. I make a motion that we appoint her as designate. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
And Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral 7, approval of legal firms. Falling firms are approved to handle legal activities on behalf of the Board of Education. Usage is at the discretion of the Board, superintendent, or treasurer. Those three firms, I think we can vote on them all at once and make a motion to that effect, are Bricker Graden, NS Breitman Company, LPA, and Frost Brown Todd. I make a motion that we approve those three firms. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral 8, recommend the Board approve the annual membership of the Ohio School Board Association for 2025. I make a motion to that effect. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
I think Tyson won that one.
Tyson?
Any discussion? Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
And Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral 9, appointments. Student achievement liaison. Is anyone on the Board particularly interested in that role? I nominate Stephanie Smith. Do we have a second? Any other nominations? Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
And Dr. Smith?
Stane.
Roman numeral 9, legislative liaison for the OSBA. Anybody particularly interested in that? You want to do that? I make a motion that Tyson be our legislative liaison. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
I understand.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
And Dr. Smith?
Yeah.
Roman numeral number 9, delegate alternate for the OSBA Capitol Conference. Anybody particularly interested in that?
Yes.
You love it?
Love it.
Okay.
So, there's two.
We've got two. Designated an alternate for Tyson as a designate as liaison, and Stephanie as the alternate. Any other nominations?
Yeah. Stephanie will be the delegate. I'll be on.
Stephanie's delegate, and Tyson's alternate. I make a motion to that effect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Valerie, do you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Dillon?
I understand.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Stane.
And Roman numeral 10, adjournment. I make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Valerie, do you call the roll?
You made the motion?
I...
Stephanie, second. I'm sorry. Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
All right. We'll start back up here in about five minutes. Can you all hear back there?
No.
Okay. Yeah. So, one...
Don't you have microphones?
We do not have microphones here right now.
I'll shoot them off.
Okay. So, a couple options. If you can't hear and you would like to hear better, there are lots of places here in front. The second thing that I will do, I'm going to gradually increase my voice, and when you can understand what I'm saying, raise your hand, and then we'll have a consensus as to what's loud enough. Is this loud enough? This? I got people in the back giving me a thumbs up. How about this? Is this good?
Yeah.
You can hear this? All right. We'll do this.
Sometimes the sound of the other ones gets all low.
Yeah. Sometimes I am a little loud. Everyone, we all agree that we're going to speak good and loud so everyone hears here?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. If you guys can't hear us, just raise your hand, and we'll make sure we get past that. And we'll see you all here in about four and a half minutes.
work and growth Beatrice has made this school year. We are so lucky to have Beatrice at Valley View Primary.
Okay, we'll move on to third grade. Camden Crowe. Camden has many good qualities. He is kind, responsible, and respectful. He's a wonderful example of what we expect from our students. When we are having class discussions, we can count on him to provide quality thoughts and reasoning for the answers he has. Claire Cornet. Claire is a very bright student. She's often the person who is following directions first. She's very good at getting her work done and is very helpful. If we are looking for someone to be doing the right thing, we can count on her. In fourth grade, Channing Ferris. Hi. Madeline Albert. Madeline is an extremely hardworking student who exemplifies the Spartan way in many areas. She has shown responsibility by always being prepared and getting her work done on time. She's respectful and follows directions and has shown great maturity for her age. Madeline is also very kind-hearted, polite, and treats her classmates and adults with respect. She's an amazing young lady and her teachers are very proud of her. Moving on to fifth grade. First up, we have Wes Rubert. Wes is a ball of positive energy. He comes to school with a smile on his face each day and is a positive role model in every class he goes into. Wes is always willing to help and is kind to his peers. We are lucky to have him in our classroom. Sophie McNeely. Sophie is always respectful to her peers and teachers. She comes prepared and on time to class and immediately upon entering the classroom, she goes to her seat and prepares for class. She is always in a good mood and is easygoing and cheerful. She is a friend to everyone. It is because of her commitment and contributions in and out of the classroom that we, the fifth grade team nominate Sophie as student of the semester. And then in sixth grade, we have Bryson Smithson. Bryson exemplifies all the best qualities of a role model, both in and out of the classroom. His kindness shines through in every interaction as he treats classmates and teachers with genuine care and compassion. He is the first to offer help if needed and is always offering an encouraging word to others. As an incredibly conscientious learner, Bryson approaches every task with determination and attention to detail, striving for excellence in all he does. His hard work and dedication truly inspire others, while his respect for peers and staff helps foster a positive and supportive learning environment. Congratulations Bryson on this well-deserved honor. Your sixth grade teachers are very proud of you. And last, we have Audrey Headworth. Audrey stands out amongst her peers because of her incredible thoughtfulness, kindness, and respect for everyone she encounters, both in and out of the classroom. She consistently demonstrates hard work in her academics, putting forth her best effort in every task. What truly sets her apart, though, is her radiant positivity. She always has a smile on her face and a kind word to brighten someone's day. She's always willing to help out her teachers and peers, even without being asked. Audrey is an inspiration to our classmates and a shining example of the values we celebrate in our school community. Congratulations Audrey on this well-deserved honor. Your sixth grade.
Valley View Junior High, Mr. Giselle. Our seventh grade girl is Annalise Kasky. Annalise was nominated by Mrs. Bursenberger. I have nominated Annalise Kasky for the Valley View Middle School Student of the Month because she exemplifies our Spartan way. She constantly goes above and beyond to help other students, to make them feel welcome and show show that she cares and speaks to others and about others. She is respectful, helpful, and always ready and prepared to learn. And she does so with a smile. She is a pleasure to have in class and a positive role model for the students. Our seventh grade boy is Liam Mitchell. Liam is an excellent student, works hard to understand all aspects of learning. He is always looking for the why something happens and is willing to try to figure it out. Liam has a great mind and makes the students around him better with his wondering mind. Liam is a well-rounded young man and participates in sports as well. Nominated by Mr. Stotfer. Our eighth grade girl is Tristan Peterson. I know she's not here tonight. She's got a makeup basketball and they came down in the auxiliary gym right now. Eighth grade boy, Jacob O'Rourke. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Berry. I'm the assistant principal of the high school. Our first freshman to recognize tonight is Amber Lewis. She is recognized by the math department. Amber comes to class prepared and ready to participate in class discussion. Her participation is refreshing and deserves recognition. She is a great addition to any class. Great job, Amber. Our next freshman is Kellyanne Gibson. Kellyanne was nominated by Mrs. Hodson. Kelly is a great asset to VVHS. She consistently produces good work and gives her best effort on assignments, in-class discussions, and on the soccer field. Kelly has a bright future ahead here at VVHS.
Thank you, guys, for being here. I'm Patrick McKee, the high school principal. Our sophomores are not here tonight, I do not believe, but I want to mention those, and that's Harley Berwanger and Austin Flynn. Our junior, first junior, is Brayden Colerizer. Brayden is recognized by Mrs. Martin, and she says that Brayden has excelled in FFA all year long and during his fall fundraising efforts. Brayden sold the highest amount in the chapter, but beyond his FFA participation, he puts forth the effort in his career courses. So, thank you so much, Brayden. Our other junior is Madison Rowland. Madison was nominated by our science department. They say that Madison does a great job of completing all of her work in a timely manner. Additionally, when she finishes early, she takes the time to help others. She is always punctual and kind to her classmates, and she is also taking a very rigorous schedule while doing all of that. So, great job, Madison. And then our seniors, I do not see them, but I want to mention them as well, and that is Sean Patterson and Cole Baker.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out for that. We do recognize that probably not all of you, especially the young ones, do not want to spend your Monday evening listening to us deal with the business of the district. And so, we'll just take a little break. And so, folks who would care to leave, feel free, folks who would like to stick around and participate and listen, that's, you're welcome to do that as well. Yes, sir.
Thanks to you.
That microphone, that microphone right there will pick up what you say. If you want them to hear it or us here, we here to hear it fine. So, whatever you're comfortable with, maybe just, whatever you're comfortable with.
I'm uncomfortable at all.
Whatever you're uncomfortable with and willing to do. Great, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Randy Alfred, and I live at forty-one twenty-one Farmersville West Alex Road. I am part of the Citizens of Farmersville Committee that was formed in twenty twenty-three. Residents and voters passed a bond levy in twenty twenty that included the abatement and demolition of the junior high building. Our committee was formed after we were made aware that the funds allocated for demolition and abatement had been transferred to construction due to cost increases. We attended our first school board meeting one year ago this month, and that involved the swearing-in of this board's newest members, Mr. Dillon and Ms. Griffin. With a large number of other citizens in that meeting, we were assured by President Rudd that this issue is a top concern for the school board, and I believe that that statement is true today. I understand that it's been a difficult situation to move forward on as long as the students were in the building. Your hands were tied from pursuing any actions until they had been vacated, which did not come to pass until last November or two months ago. We were also told at that meeting that unfortunately, there are going to be a lot of people who are going to be told no for their request. Since that meeting one year ago, members from our committee have been present at every school board meeting, and the minutes from those meetings show that not one request brought before this school board has been denied. Not one. The records reflect that there have been three no votes cast by board member Ms. Griffin, but ultimately, every request has been approved for additional and discretionary spending by a majority vote. The minutes show that those additional spendings are well over two million dollars. It was reported to our committee after a meeting with our village mayor and fellow citizen John Shade that the school district attorney stated that the district is not in financial shape at this time to pay for those demolition and abatement costs. I can't help but think that the junior high building could have realized a successful conclusion if only one-third of those additional and discretionary monies had been declined as was promised. I understand the difficulty in telling our coaches, teachers, and kitchen staff, who are also our friends and neighbors, that for the time being, their requests will not be approved, but I believe that they would understand waiting for one year for your yes vote. I know that the majority of this board's members ran on and identify as conservatives, and I realize that that term can have different meanings, but I also understand that being a conservative can mean financially conservative, and it's my hope that that means the same to you. I know that it's tough to sit in those chairs and make decisions, and that there's always going to be someone who is not pleased with your vote. It's easy to make promises in front of sixty-plus upset citizens, but then vote differently when the large crowds are not in attendance and subsequent meetings. It is our committee's hope that the promises that were made one year ago will be kept in this upcoming year. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Kathy Young.
I'm not sure who to pick. Good evening, President Rudd, Superintendent Cook, and fellow board members. My name is Kathy Young, and I thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I am speaking for a large group of parents and community members who have been following the progress of our TRI legislation in Ohio. And for those who don't understand the term, that means religious, release time for religious instruction. After several hearings and much debate, Senate Bill Two ninety-three was added to House Bill Eight, where additional revisions were made, and the combined bill was passed in the final hours of December's so-called lame duck session. While the legislation mandated that all districts have an RTR policy, it does give districts leeway to establish limits on RTR programs. So, why would districts put limits on these programs? Well, recently created programs have asked to remove students during school hours, bus them to an off-site location for instruction, and bus them back. Concerns with this are numerous, beginning with safety. First, are RTRI staff passing adequate background checks? There's documentation of inadequate checks evidenced by a teacher being hired and later fired by a large, fast-growing program. When public investigation revealed she had been fired from her previous job or in a school or texting with students. Are programs that bus students doing everything to ensure student safety on their buses? Once again, there are documented reports of two accidents involving buses provided by the RTRI program, and a lengthy list of safety violations on their buses has recently been released. And are RTRI programs providing adequate training to their staff in first aid, CPR, dispensing of medications, and child abuse in mandated reporting? Along with safety concerns, there has been much confusion over liability for children's safety. A very large RTRI program was previously having parents sign a release absolving them of all responsibility. They abolished this release under public pressure. Will our district make policy change to ensure all parties, parents, school, and RTRI entities acknowledge that full liability falls on the RTRI program? A second huge concern is disruption of the school day for both students and teachers. District leadership will need to devote large amounts of time to deciding on the least disruptive scheduling option and then spend more time implementing this with teachers and staff. And once again, there are documented instances where RTRI programs have returned students late. This kind of disruption is much more difficult to manage with our youngest students. They often require more time to get settled back into their routine, resulting in more lost instruction time. And lost instruction time is another large concern. Current Ohio Revised Code Law states students cannot miss any instruction in core subject areas. Our current policy does not identify so-called specials as core. This needs to be added to our RTRI policy so that instructional time in art, music, physical education, and health and wellness is protected. And I might add that other RTRI districts are putting that in writing in their policies. Another current concern is the divisiveness that may be created by large scale during school hours release. The risk for this is especially high with the program life-wise, which tells students to recruit their friends and rewards them for doing so. Students in life-time-wise sometimes return to class with candy or other tangible rewards. This has the potential to create bullying of the non-participating students by their participating peers. Will the district enact policy changes that stops this divisive practice? Finally, Ohio RTRI law is very clear that no school resources or staff time be spent on RTRI implementation. What will the district do to ensure this does not happen? Other nearby districts are creating contracts or memorandums of understanding that both parties sign, making this boundary clearly established in writing. Will Valley View make similar policy changes to ensure RTRI law is adhered to? And in closing, it is likely that Niola is working on and may soon release a new suggested RTRI policy for districts to consider. It is our hope that our district takes our concerns into consideration too and creates a strong policy that ensures students' physical and emotional safety and protects their valuable instruction time from disruption. I will also add that there is one other handout I gave you indicating that the issue with reimbursement for lunches during RTRI time is being looked at. And so, I think we need to keep that in mind, that there are people watching the go-around that Ohio's ODEW did. So, that is a concern as well. Thank you for your time, and I welcome comments.
Thank you, Kathy. Roman numeral four, approval of minutes. Make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes for December night, twenty twenty-four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin? Yes. Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral five, building project update. Eric.
So, as you guys can see, the building is pretty much done. It's beautiful, and I'm going to keep telling you that every time anymore. The biggest lesson that we learned very crisp break and up till now is how violent this part of the law is. It was a very difficult situation for us, especially in the first time to go around having two blasts within the same week. War's all out, but we got it done.
So, there are efficiencies that are being established now?
Definitely efficient.
All right. And so, you said pretty much done. I mean, obviously, we still have the canopies to add outside once the weather gets a little bit better.
We still have some contractors who've been building and buying that top of where they do a technology thing, different small things, but all in all, we're good.
All right, great, thank you. Roman numeral six, financial reports request. Roman numeral six A, recommend the board approve the financial statements for the month ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I make a motion with that effect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin? Yes. Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral six B, recommend the board approve the donation from Longman Farms LLC. Before I make a motion with that effect, can you explain what the donation is?
This is for the naming rights campaign of Valley View Educational Foundation. It's administered for us, and we proceed through that. We'll be paid for, go for items that can be purchased for the building.
Okay. And so, whenever there's a donation made, our policy requires that we recognize it and approve it, and so, that's what we're doing. I make a motion that we approve that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Obviously, thank you to Longman Farms LLC. Valerie, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin? Yes. Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral six C, recommend the board approve the then-and-now certifications, OHSAA, Highland Administrative Services, and Catalyst. I know we do this all the time, but Valerie, just so people pay attention here, what is a then-and-now?
This is a situation where the invoices came before the, and our data before the purchase order was created, the date that the purchase order was created.
So, I'll make a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral seven, new business personnel. Approve the personnel action as recommended in attachment number three. Yeah, we did them all once. I'm trying to be efficient here. Recommend the, approve the personnel act, action recommended in attachment number three. We all have copies of that in our board packet. I make a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin? Yes. Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral seven B, recommend the board approve the satellite program agreement between Miami Valley Career Technology Center and Valley View Local School District. Valerie, would you give a quick explanation for folks what that is?
Actually, I'm going to refer to Ms. Cook. I think she has a better explanation.
Thank you. That is when we have an agreement for a teacher to come that is employed by Miami Valley CTC to offer courses onsite at Valley View High School or Valley View Junior High School. So, this agreement is to state that we will be having an individual come from Miami Valley CTC next school year to teach courses within our high school onsite here, as opposed to students going to Miami Valley CTC for course order. It is a satellite program.
Who pays?
Miami Valley CTC pays for the individual to come out. Their benefits, as far as they're paying as well.
Thank you. Will someone make a motion? Do we approve that?
Senator Lou.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin? Yes. Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral seven C, recommend the board approve the resolution authorizing lift station easement dedication and service agreement with the Village of Farmersville. I make a motion that we do that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral seven D, recommend the board approve the resolution authorizing approval of license and donation agreement for the renovation of the high school wrestling room and weight room expansion project and accepting the donation from the Valley View Athletic Booster Club. Do we have a motion that we approve that? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral seven E. Recommend the board approve the resolution authorizing agreements to install flooring and to purchase exercise equipment for the renovation of the high school wrestling room and weight room expansion project. Do we have a motion with that effect? I will make a motion with that effect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can somebody explain? So, where's your purchasing according to the rest of the?
That's the room in the weight room. Yes, and with the intent that the Valley View Athletic Boosters will donate the funds necessary for that purchase.
So, the funds are then from the money's issue?
Correct. And then, on that, the donation from the Athletic Boosters. This is typically how we, how we make purchases. We validate the district. It's important that we be the purchasing agent for those items, so we have decisions in discretion and what can be purchased and what actually is purchased, rather than the goods being donated to the district.
Okay, so, so, does that mean we're, I mean, are we carrying the donation?
The Athletic Boosters have been extremely valuable partners in the past, and I have no issue, I mean, thinking that that donation will not happen.
So, just for clarification, the Valley View Athletic Boosters has already said that they will reimburse us the full amount for this?
Yes.
So, basically, there are benefits from receiving a monetary contribution instead of an in-kind contribution. Approving this enables us to receive that money to do the things we are going to do with the monetary contribution that has been promised by one of our most steadfast partners in the district.
I have one more question. Is that if bragging, if they will, is this just like a verbal agreement or what's? Like, you know, verbal agreement, if there's an ask, you will, but is there something, something in writing here and see that we're going to get that done?
Not yet, but there is always a written letter when a donation is made that you guys see in your board packets.
Yeah, and my take, my take on that is if the day ever comes that I feel like I need in writing from the Valley View Athletic Booster something has gone very awry, I think they run their trust.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make that motion sorry to the main, correct?
Yes.
Valerie, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Roman numeral seven F. Recommend the board approve the school calendar. Room number seven F, recommend the board approve the school calendar for the 2025, 2026, and 2026, 2027 school year. Will someone make a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Valerie, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Room number seven G, recommend the board approve the preschool calendar for the 2025, 2026, and 2026, 2027 school years. Will someone make a motion of that effect?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Valerie, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Room number seven H, recommend the board approve the indoor track and field season that begins January 3rd, 2025, and concludes on March 9, 2025, and also approve Devon Stoughton Borough and Laura Stoughton Borough as volunteers to act as indoor track and field coaches per OHSAA and OAT and CCC indoor requirements. I make a motion that we approve that. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? So one of the things that's important to understand is that there are avenues for exposure of our athletes. There are avenues for opportunities for our athletes that unless, unless it is an official school sport, they can't do. I'm thankful for people like the Stoughton Boroughs who are willing to volunteer their time and make this available so that we aren't having additional staff costs, coach, coaching costs, and salaries for this. And so I appreciate of, of the people willing to do that. Any more discussion? Valerie, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Room number seven I, recommend the board approve the competition cheer and dance for the 2024, 2025 season, and also approve Shannon Longman as a volunteer who will supervise competition cheer practices and competitions. Will someone make a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? One thing that's important, again, Shannon being willing to volunteer, two, we have some very talented folks who participate in cheer in our district, and we also have, not affiliated with the school, but we have competition squads among the younger girls as well in this community. And they work hard and they do a good job, and this will put us in a situation that when they get to high school, they'll have an opportunity to continue as a school sport what it is that they put so much effort into. So I think it's a great idea. Valerie, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Room number eight, superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Rudd. Just want to congratulate our group who did the hip hop dance routine this weekend, and they'll be moving on to the next level, so we're excited for those young ladies. The building is beautiful, as you can see, I don't think last time we were here, we had all the painting done. Students are enjoying this common space, and it's fun to come out during lunches and see them in action. Donations, we're always thankful for donations from our community to advance our students' education and extracurriculars. So thank you for all of those donations, those who worked on those. And it was, it was very exciting for me to see our students of the semester come out tonight with their families. I think they put a smile on everybody's faces as they came up and received their awards. And lastly, I want to address Ms. Yon on release time for religious instruction. I have not heard anything from our community in months with regards to any release time for religious instruction, so that is just a community update on that item that I know some of you are very interested in. But thank you for your time for tonight, Ms. Yon.
Room number nine, board member comments. Let's go left to right. We're going to start with you, Tyler, today.
I first off like to say congratulations to the students of the semester as a huge accomplishment for everyone, and you guys should be proud of that, and I'm excited for the new semester to start. Let's hope that it goes as well with the semester.
I'd also like to congratulate the students of the semester, and congratulations to the hip hop team. I saw their dance at the festival, and I was really impressed, so I can't wait to see what they do at state.
Thanks.
I got to go to the Valley View Wrestling Invitational a couple weeks ago at the old high school, and it was either 16 or 18 teams, and it was marvelous to see how many people pitched in to make that happen. Not only the coaches, who do a fantastic job, but I saw parents of children that didn't even wrestle there helping out. It was, it was really great to see everybody pitching in to help out. Then for the Farmersville building people, we are in the process of two grants now. One would be the Brownfield Grant, which will handle the asbestos remediation, and we contacted a company to help out a grant. From what we understand, this company is the best in Ohio, and they are not refusing a grant when they write it. So they only get paid if we get paid. Then the other one will be for the, the other grant will be for the demolition of the building. So things aren't moving forward. We're happy, but we still can't promise a timeline, which is, you know, I'm sorry. But you know how important it is, you guys, especially, you guys watch our dollars and sense very well. So to get free money is, is a really big deal right now, so we're trying for everything we can. Got it?
Yeah, and I'll second what Tyson said. Both Tyson and I sit on the Farmersville Building Committee, and we're very much invested in making sure we do the right thing, and we are going to try our absolute best to make sure that we do what we need to do for you guys. Also, Tyson and I both sat on the Safety Committee meeting last month. We had a great representation from staff and multiple local law enforcement officials there and administration, as well as myself and Tyson, and some great ideas, things that we're going to be trying to move on and try to make this school as safe as possible now that we're in here and we can see, you know, some areas that we'd like to tighten up if we could. Congratulations to the hip hop. I'm a former cheer mom, so I'm super excited for the girls going to state. That's awesome. And thank you to all our people that donate out there for us. I know there's so many of you that really work hard for this school district. We are going to try to be good stewards of that money. I believe that we have been to this point, and we will continue to be so. And thank you also to all of our students of the month. I'm super excited to see this files on their faces. Very encouraging.
Thank you. Okay, so a couple things. One, I do, I value turnout, and I value participation, and when people are here in the same room, we're able to communicate differently. If anybody was talking to me after this meeting and had any questions for me particularly, please do it. I don't mind. But I do, I do want folks to understand, and this is something I tell my, my, my clients at my law firm too, you can have things done right, you can have them done fast, and you can have them done cheap, but you gotta pick two. You don't get all three of those. And so I know it's frustrating to see, well, what are we doing? What are we doing? First order of business is getting the asbestos out of the building, and that is, it's non-negotiable. We could all show up with sledgehammers, and that will be really bad for us if we skip caring about this. There are people that can help us get that paid for, and that's part of what we're working on. And so as things move, listen, if, if we don't have, if we don't have a clear plan in place in the relatively near future, I'll be very disappointed. I think you've heard people tell you that they're committed. I don't think everybody on this board has promised that they want to support it. Some people have been a little hesitant about that, but I can tell you, I personally think it's a moral obligation that this district find a way to not leave this on the city of Farmersville. There's been some discussion, people come up from time to time and say, well, maybe someone might want to buy it, or maybe someone might have a use for it, and I know that comes up. It came up with Germantown. I'll tell you what we did with Germantown. I recognize that there are limits on what it is we can do in terms of determining who we sell a building to. And the answer to that question is, we can't pick who we sell a building to. If the district wants to sell a building, we have to put it up for auction. Let me tell you who that's going to go to. It's going to go to the person with the ability to come up with just enough to scrap it and leave it as a shell if we do that. So if people have ideas and want to talk, there's ways we could work with the village to, to work through them, because the village can sell it to whoever they want, and we can, we can transfer it to a, a, a public entity, a government. And so what we did with Germantown, talking with, with potential options there, we said, listen, we recognize this is, this is our response. I think it's our responsibility, maybe not a legal one, but a moral. And so the way that we can make sure this doesn't end up falling back on the community if, if this ever becomes an option, is we can put in agreement, put in place agreements that says, okay, goes to the city, goes to whoever is interested, but if they ever don't use it for such and such a purpose, then it would revert back to us so that it becomes our responsibility. And maybe that kicks the can down the road 10, 15, 20 years. Who knows? There's a million options out there. Right now, I think the focus is on tearing the building down. That way, we don't have to worry about what a board would do, whether they would do the right thing 10, 15, 20 years from now. And so it's going to be a matter of taking this systematically and being good stewards. And good stewards means not just spending the money on that without looking at all of our options to have somebody else's money do that. One thing that was said that I think is really important to understand, right now, the building hasn't been torn down, and a lot of people from Farmersville are here because they feel like that, that's not a no, but it feels like a no, because we're not spending the money. And I want you to understand that that's true for a lot of other people, because this expenditure has never come up for a vote. And so when you look at the things we approve, you can't make the logical assumption, it's a fallacy to assume, that that means we've said yes to everything that's been put before us. The things that get nos ultimately don't get put before us most of the time. And so please do not think that this board or this district has operated with an open checkbook policy towards the people who want us to spend money on things, because I guarantee you, you will find as many people as you want to find in this district who are unhappy for something we haven't taken up to affirmatively do. And so I don't want there to be this conception that it's just, yes, money to you, yes, money to you, yes, money to you, and we're not doing that, doing anything with you all. That's not the case. And so we need to be really clear on that. So please understand, I personally am not comfortable with not making sure that either we pay for the building to be torn down, or that eventually we put ourselves in a position, if someone else were to come in and wanted to use it for some specific purpose, that eventually there's not a reversion back to us so that it ultimately becomes our responsibility and not an eyesore. I grew up in Philsburg, Ohio, drive through Philsburg, I know exactly what happens when you drop the ball on this. With regard to release time for religious education, I, I will be very transparent on this. I happen to believe that parents ought to be given the ultimate decision as to what happens with their children. And the, the way that our policy is structured presently, it is a parental decision whether you say yes or no, if someone were to come along and have a program like that here. I don't think that in the interest of, in the interest of, of whatever our, our vision might be for what the school ought to be, that we ought to take away options from parents. So I will not ever support a getting rid of a policy that allows RTRI. I personally think that it's a really good thing, because not everybody can send their kids to private school. Not everybody has that option. And so we don't take away the public school option and then tell the parents, hey, listen, if you want some, if you want, if you want instruction during the school day for your child in religious matters, I happen to think it's, 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 it's a parent's decision whether we do that. I'm, I'm always going to be in favor of leaving options open to the parents. Other than that, I think I've said enough, Bob.
I just want to say I agree with everybody else on what they've said about Farmersville. I think that's our duty to come up with a way to take care of that building. Hopefully, we can get it torn down when it needs to be, but please be patient, because as we said, we're trying to find the best way to do that. Another thing I'd like to bring up, and I know we've tried to talk about this gradually, but Mr. Schaller is probably at his last tour meeting tonight.
I believe so.
Mr. Schaller has been wonderful. He came out of retirement again to fill in and make sure that we had a superintendent we could count on during this building project. He stuck it out and made sure that he was here and still the project was done, and I just wish him well on his real retirement, he says. He says this one's real, so I just wish him well.
Thank you.[1631.04]